Good evening. Before we begin, I'd like to announce that we will be having a tribute to Mr. Hall tonight during the citizen comments for items that are not on the agenda. We're going to divide that into two sections. First, we'll have the tribute to Jim Hall and then we'll finish that and we'll be clear about that. And then we'll move into other comments that you may have that you'd like to share with the city council for items that do not appear on the agenda. So that's how we'll move forward tonight. That being said, I will call the meeting to order for October 5, 2015. And if you'd stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I could ask the clerk to read the all.
Councilmember Althaus?
Here.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Hedges?
Here. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the agenda and the other additions, corrections, changes, or anything else.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Now, second. Been moved in second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor?
Yes.
Item three is approval of previous minutes. And we had a regular council meeting on Monday, September 21st. We'll entertain those minutes first.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 21st.
Now, second.
Been moved in second to approve the minutes of September 21st. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Then there was a special meeting held on the following Monday, September 28th, and those minutes are also in the packet for your review.
Yeah, one maybe correction. I see Barb Barber on 318 King. Does Barb Barber still know that address or I thought it was that?
I think the answer is no, but any.
Yeah, can we correct that? Did we correct that address?
We'll just drop the address and leave the name, I think.
Yes.
Be sufficient.
That would be fine. Thank you. With that, I move that we approve the minutes of the special meeting.
Now, second.
Been moved in second to adopt the minutes of the special meeting of September 28th. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Approval of the accounts payable, item four.
I move that we approve the accounts payable as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Been moved in second to adopt the accounts payable. Well, please.
Councilmember Althaus?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item five, citizen comments, and we'll begin with the tribute to Mr. Hall. What? Just four. And his great sadness, of course, that we learned about Jim's passing. Bev, his wife, passed away on February 2nd, and so it's in some ways very fitting and very wonderful that they can be together, not too distant apart in terms of times of passing. I'll just start out by saying that Jim was a dear friend. I had heard much about him before I met him. As when we moved to Lowell, he was, and Bev had moved to California and then came back and then I met him. And he was all that I had heard and more, and Bev too, but two wonderful people that certainly contributed to our community a great deal, not just for the city council but, and not just with the showboat, but those are two places that stand out, but through many other activities and organizations and just being who they were. And with that, maybe do the table here and then we'll open it up to public. So, do you have anything?
I have worked with him for many years and I just think he was an absolute wonderful man and I am so privileged to have known him.
Mr. Hall?
Well, Mr. Hall was a man of great character and, of course, he was a charade man too. He had great, great passion for the community and simply put, he just wanted things to look nice. And I think that's the easiest way to describe the man in the community. He certainly wasn't afraid to express his opinion. In fact, he often did that. That was my first introduction to him was the famous Jim Hall emails. Welcome, city manager. I think you need to work on this, 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 and this. But he wasn't afraid to listen either, and I think those who took the time to get to know him really would know that, that he would listen. He'd still form his own opinion, but he would, he would listen. I can say many, many other things about him, but he would say, "Just shut up," and so in his honor, I'll do just that.
I didn't know Jim very well personally, and he was great to sit next to. I wish he would share his candy that he keeps in that drawer often. I should have asked him.
But he was very, very outspoken.
I liked his character, I really did. He wasn't afraid to really tell you what was on his mind, even though he had pulled his tongue a few times, I'm sure. I loved his character, just to, I mean, I've met a lot of people in my life, but he's something I have never met before.
Sure.
I'm going to read the letter I wrote to the ledger, so I think that sums it up. Jim was an inspiration and sometimes an irritation to us. One of our favorite meetings and saying, sayings in meetings was, "Now, tell us how you really feel, Jim," because he would always just tell us how he felt. We like to kid him about that. I'm going to miss his wit, his wisdom, his sarcasm, his concern, his honesty, his integrity, his foresight, his creativity, his sense of humor, the way he brightened up when he spoke of his family. His art background influenced him to create a vision of Lowell, and he would share that with anyone who wanted to listen. I often saw him driving around the city. He wanted to make sure things were as they should be and when they weren't. He was not afraid to go home and let us know, and that kind of gave me some comfort to know he was kind of looking out for us all. His concern for the future caused him to try to run again for office, and I think he was probably not feeling well, but he still wanted to make sure that his vision of Lowell had a chance to grow. There's a Greek proverb that I think sums it up. It says that "A society grows great when old men plant trees who shade they know they shall never sit in." Thanks for the trees, Jim.
I only knew Jim as a council person and a planning commission person. To get to know him as a friend, or I guess I could consider him a little bit of a friend, but we never talked anything but city business, so that's, you know, he was a nice man, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I've known Jim and his wife for probably 20 years. I've waited on them both several times. They were both just absolute sweethearts, and I really admire Jim's design sense, all his comments. He will be greatly missed.
In the short time that I've been here, I've dealt with Jim on several different issues. He would call or email a concern or something that he saw that he didn't think was quite right. It was very obvious that his best interest was in the condition and citizenship of the city of Lowell.
I guess what I liked the most about Mr. Hall was his brutal honesty, and he always knew where you stood with him. The first time I met him had to do with cleaning up the neighborhood up there quite a few years ago, and he had a few colorful expressions on what the house looked like and what it needed to be done to it, so I kind of was taken aback by it at first, but I, at least I always knew where I stood with him, and that's what I like about that type of person.
Thank you. A little of this, so we have his daughter here. His daughter's Kristen Ryder. Welcome, and glad you could be here to hear some of this, and it's all in love, all the, yeah. Anybody else that would like to come up to the podium, please do, and if you have any comments or stories you'd like to share about Jim or Bev, this regard would be a wonderful time to do it.
Just a real quick comment. He was a kind of a crusty guy, but I enjoyed him immensely, and I always, always looked forward to his comments, you know, his council comments, so I'm going to miss that an awful lot. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? If not, then know that Kristen, that we all feel very badly and wish you the best and fond memories of your parents. All that being said, then we'll move on to regular citizen comments that do not appear on the agenda, so if any citizen would like to address the council about other matters, this would be the time to do so. We'd ask that you state your name and keep your comments to about five minutes.
Hi, guys. I'm Catherine Atwood. I'm here with my committee members on behalf of the Lowell Relay for Life. We're basically just here to answer any questions or give you any information that you need in regards to your decision on our moving from the Lowell High School venue to River Walk venue.
Okay. Let me be loo to several of the people I'm aware of, that very well, and the Relay for Life, they sell in June?
Yes, that's correct. June 25 would be the proposed date.
I was, I was really one year.
Yeah, lovely.
Oh, no, it wasn't. I'm very familiar with it, and there are pictures on my Facebook page if you really want to see. But anyway, they're looking at moving from a high school, which is a little bit uptown, to moving within our downtown area, right around the River Walk, going up to King Street, across and back down the Monroe and back again. That's about a quarter of a mile, about the same as lap route to the track, and I think you're looking at reducing the time from 24 hours to 12.
It would be, yeah. 12 hours, from 11 to 11.
Okay. So, gee.
We had requested public comment on what they thought of the Relay for Life being moved to the downtown area. Most of the comments were positive. The one concern was the noise from the band, so we had asked if they were going to have a live band that they would equip at 10 o'clock versus 11 o'clock. That was the main concern in the neighborhood, but everything else was positive.
Okay. Regarding that, we do plan to have live music, but we also plan to seize that at 9 o'clock as in the showboat concerts, the same schedule as that.
All right. Sounds like fun.
Yeah.
Wish it was over a happier subject, but we make the best of what.
It is, it is. It's a celebration.
It is, it really is, so. Any other council concerns or, I think we're good.
Okay, great, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Catherine. Anyone else here to address the council today? Seeing none, then we'll move on to our old business, item six, our strategic goals as well as our pending council projects. Mr. Hall?
Nothing to report, no matter.
Okay. Moving on then to new business. Item A is the council appointment timeline for filling the vacancy of Councilmember Hall or Paul. Too many inches.
Not that important.
Excuse me.
One correction on the proposed timeline is notice will be placed in the October 3 buyer's guide. Actually, it would be the October 10 buyer's guide, because we obviously would not, you know, we did that.
Yes. And reading through this, notice will be placed in the buyer's guide on October 10 as well as this Wednesday, October 7th, the ledger, posting the opening applications for the open seat. The appointment would be due by high noon on Thursday, October 15. All applications would then be shared with the city council in their regular council meeting packets that would go out the following, well, maybe later that day or the following day, late Thursday, early Friday for the Monday, October 19th meeting. Time would be taken at the October 19th meeting as part of our regular agenda to fill that vacancy. And so that's the plan that we have, and sure with council, is that, I think that's going to work all right.
Sounds like what we've done in the past. It's fun with me.
Any other concerns or, no? We'll go ahead and approve this process.
Moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Then moving on to item number B, Sunday, the Grand Valley Metro Council.
The Grand Valley Metropolitan Council has asked that you adopt a resolution, and they've got articles of incorporation to add Nelson Township and Village Sparta as our communities, and so there's a recommended resolution to close your packet that would adopt that amendment to be an article of incorporation.
All right. I move that we approve Resolution 1615. Now, second. Oh, excuse me, amended, excuse me, Amendment 39, is that correct?
Is there Amendment 39, or is your?
Our resolution is, okay. Okay, to accept Amendment 39. How about that? All amend my motion.
You know, still second, either way. All right. Thank you. Motion to adopt Resolution 1615. This may be a roll call.
Councilmember Althaus?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges?
Yes.
Item C is Dixon Engineering. Very much.
Public Works is requesting approval on the agreement with Dixon Engineering. They would provide inspection and technical services relating to the 500,000 gallon water tank on Chover Street, and the agreement would be $4,190,000, and then if there are other services that needed to be provided, then that would be on an as needed basis at additional cost.
All right. Moving forward.
And this is who we usually use, is Dixon?
This is who we use. Mr. Woods has had some experience with them in his prior life as a caperwick, and so we're, yeah. We have used them, right? Yes. Moving, approve the agreement with Dixon Engineering?
Now, second.
Been moved in second to pass this agreement? All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the well number one rehabilitation bids.
We've received a balling three bids for rehabilitation of well number one. Peerless Midwest is a little bid at $24,720, Laney is at $25,535, and Northern Pumped Endwell is at $29,676. This item was included in our capital plan for current fiscal year, and we're recommending accept the bid from Peerless Midwest.
Have we used these companies before? Any of these companies before?
The Peerless Midwest.
Do you have this tomorrow?
Right, it did.
Yes, Peerless has done, they did a well for us in 2005, and they've done plenty of work.
The difference is not that much on the local compared to the other. We don't have addresses, but, I mean, is one from Ohio and one from Grand Rapids or?
They're all from West Michigan. Peerless, I believe, is out of Laney, and so is Laney.
Okay. Just, just curious if one was more local than the other.
No, but nobody's Lowell.
Nobody's Lowell, and we would prefer a slight difference. Okay. Thanks, right. I move that we accept the bid from Peerless Midwest.
Now, second.
Been moved in second to accept the bid from Peerless Midwest. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item E, review redevelopment liquor license process.
I had mentioned to you in a previous meeting that I was working on the process that we use internally as SPAC to review redevelopment liquor licenses as those applications come to us. We had one quite some time ago, in the last year, that came to us, and there was some discussion during and afterward that perhaps there wasn't enough notice given and folks didn't know that that license was actually coming before the council, and so our goal was to go back and look at that internal process and maximize transparency and allow for public input as that recommendation was coming before you. The process follows the, many of the requirements that are laid out by the Liquor Control Commission. Number one, obviously, the application is turned in to us. Number two, the application is forwarded, it's turned in at the police department and it's forwarded from the police department to the city clerk. Three and four are really just doing some background work internally to, first of all, make sure that the applicant meets the seminal requirements that's required by the Liquor Control Commission and required by the Public Act. Those requirements are, first of all, that it has to be located, the business has to be located within the DEA district. They, after the spender will expend at least $75,000 for rehabilitation or restoration of the building that they're going to react to. And then the business has to have seating capacity, not less than 25 persons. There's some discussion about, I don't know, if that's 50 now, I think that's been going back and forth, and I think so will follow that and revise this, so if that's appropriate. But basically, number three is, do they meet the state requirements? Number four is, do they meet local requirements, so there's local guidelines? For example, do they, do they meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance? Does it follow the city's master plan, any DEA development plan that's in place or other developmental guides that are applicable to the industry? Do they have any current or outstanding code violations with the city of Lowell? Do they have any outstanding city taxes or city fees? So, looking at a local level on whether or not they're meeting our local requirements. Once that's done, assuming they have met all requirements within three and four, then our next step would be notifying members of the DEA and the Planning Commission. I had discussion about this process with the Downtown Development Authority, and one of the, one of the issues that came up before was, well, the DEA has approved these before, and why didn't they approve this last one? And so as I talked with DEA, I said, "Do you want to be a step in the process because it's not required, the state law isn't required, it does require that the business be located within the DEA district, but DEA approval is not required?" And through the course of the discussion, the DEA said, "Well, you know, as long as we're notified, if we know it's going before the council, then, you know, insert some kind of a notification to us in the process." I've also taken the initiative to include the Planning Commission in that process as well, and I'll be discussing this process with the Planning Commission at their meeting next week. But, you know, as we're going through and the review of zoning, the internal review of zoning, it always seems appropriate that we notify the Planning Commission as well, that somebody has applied for one of these licenses, so that if those members have any concerns, they can, we would encourage them to report those concerns to the police department because they'll be going through this investigative process, or they have an opportunity to speak under, under the public hearing when, when the issue comes before you. Next step then is that we, that the clerk is notifying those members, then we say to the police department, "Proceed with your investigative recommendations." It's a formal process that they have to go through and actually a form that they have to fill out. We've added into that that the police department would, as part of their investigative process, notify the current license holders that a, somebody has requested a developmental liquor license, and so we're letting the current license holders know that that request is going to be. Next step is the clerk prepares the local government approval form. That's the resolution that you see that's in your package. So that, that is drafted. There's an affidavit of public and private investment that has to be prepared by the city assessor. That affidavit is the city assessor saying that within the past five years, there's been X amount of public and private investment within the DEA district. The DEA district, the way that the licenses work is that there's one available for every $200,000 of public and private investment over the last five years, and so that's why the assessor has to go through this process of identifying that there's been at least $200,000 in investment, in public and private investment in the last five years, so that's why the assessor goes through that process. Number 10 is the city clerk puts together an affidavit basically affirming that to the Liquor Control Commission that a DEA district has been created, that the proposed location is located within the DEA district, and that she has received the affidavit of public and private investment. Once that's done, all of the documentation is forwarded to the city manager to include on the future council agenda. Number 12 is the applicant is advised at the date of the council meeting that the agenda will be under agenda. 13 is that you actually review the application, and I think it's important for you to know that you're, you're not necessarily approving or denying an application, you're either recommending or not recommending the application. It, either way, it still can go to the Liquor Control Commission. An applicant can take that application to the Liquor Control Commission with the council saying, "We do not recommend this." Whether the Liquor Control Commission is forward with it, I don't know, but the local control on that issue have been, I'm told has been, or had been removed quite some years After that, after you take action, the city clerk completes the approval form, and then the applicant is informed that the application is completed and they can pick up the split and dotting documentation, and they take it to the LCC. So, that's the process, and again, you know, we, after the last time we went through this, there were some concerns raised, we listened to those concerns, we included in our local process some steps that I think maximize transparency and they can allow for additional public input, and I wanted to at least lay that out before you and get your input as well, and see what you think, and if there's something else you think we ought to do or something you think about a strike, please let me know then, that this is the process that otherwise we plan to go through as a staff as we prepare this recommendation for you.
All right. Any questions or concerns? I think we really appreciate the process and what you've shared with us, having an update on it. Go ahead.
I know it's not an easy task to get a liquor license, but I can see that it's not an easy task to get a liquor license. But wow, I didn't know it was all that. That's a lot of, a lot of hoops to jump through. That would have been very helpful for the last.
Yes.
Great. It would have put it in perspective for me, at least, anyway.
Yes.
Yeah. So I'm glad. That's something I'm big regarding, with a date on it and start working on that.
There's no formal action that's required tonight, but just something for process that city manager can share with us for future.
Now, there's one thing that I will add to, and it's a, it's a policy discussion that we had at the DEA. I think it's something for you to think about and something for the Planning Commission to think about, is, and Chief Dukel can jump in here because he really is the expert on liquor licenses, but, but you have what are called Class C licenses, and those are the licenses that are purchased on the open market, and, and those are purchased for a sum of money, and they have a certain value to them, and they have a value to the person who owns that license. And there's a limit on how many you can have in a community, and, but there's not much in terms of limits in terms of the transportability of those licenses. The redevelopment license are building specific and business specific. They are typically less to purchase than the open market licenses, but also the applicant has to go through the process with the Liquor Control Commission to prove that they are not able to purchase an open market license, so they have to prove that to the Liquor Control Commission. The local policy discussion and for you to think about is that how many, at what point in time do we say we granted enough redevelopment liquor licenses? How many is enough? For example, the King Million, or King Milling, 11 million? For example, um, the, the King Million, uh, King Milling, eleven million dollar expansion alone created enough private investment for fifty-five licenses. I don't think you want fifty-five liquor licenses in the city of Lowell. So that's, that, that policy discussion of is there a limit and what might that limit be and can we even enforce a limit is, is a discussion for you to have. And I think it's a discussion with the council, I think it's a discussion with the DEA and for the Planning Commission, and it's something that, that, um, we had at the DEA. I encourage you to watch, um, watch the video when I meet you from the DEA meeting. Um, but I'll also have it with the Planning Commission and get them thinking about it because their, their main, you know, the greatest thing in the world, I think, would be that all of a sudden you great, get this great interest and people wanting to open up restaurants and wanting redevelopment liquor licenses in the city of Lowell. I think that's a great thing. But at some point, you oversaturate the market. And some people will say, well, isn't that just a private enterprise concern? Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. It's a policy discussion for you to have as a council. Um, and it's also a discussion that perhaps you have with your Planning Commission and with the Downtown Development Authority. So just want you thinking about that, um, because that is hanging out there and that is some agreement.
All right. Thank you, David.
Not at this time.
All right. Thank you. Then we'll move on to council comments, uh, item number eight, Dr. Mayor.
Uh, Fire Department meet the next Monday, the twelfth, at three-thirty, Fire Barn. Please come. It's a nice little meeting. Um, I have a couple of comments here that, from our special meeting that we had last weekend, some comments in the ledger. Some people leave the meeting at Schneider Manor for the meet the new candidates was a closed meeting. It wasn't closed by any means. Um, and as none of the candidates are on the city council, it really doesn't matter if it was closed or not because they don't make any decisions on anything, so that's pretty crazy. Um, it was primarily and solely a chance for the residents, the senior residents there to meet the new candidates and feel them out and their positions on certain things. Um, that's all it was. Um, and although I wasn't able to attend, I would like to. I don't think that, uh, that anyone being upset about that has really any right to be upset about it because if they were, they should be wrong. There's nothing illegal, nothing crazy going on. Um, and I think it's a pretty low blow for someone to be upset about a, a group of elderly people wanting to meet the new candidates who can't get here, um, for whatever reason. For someone to get upset about that, I think it's, uh, it's a pretty big blow to their character, in my opinion, uh, whatever you feel that warrants. I also feel that for the mayor and the mayor pro tem to be in attendance in the meeting was not out of the question, but for them to be upset about not being able to speak at the meeting, I think that was terrible because it wasn't for you, it was for to meet the new candidates. You are not the new candidates, you are the incumbents. Uh, they have already, they know you already. For you guys to be upset about that, I also think is, um, in my opinion, not a very good stepping in or in the right direction for you. And it was brought up that, at the special meeting, some of that, you know, that the voice members have a hidden agenda. Like to question yourself on who may have a hidden agenda. With that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Alton.
Um, none of my boards have met yet this month. I lost a little bit of concentration, but it's, it's back. I, uh, I do want to comment on the developmental liquor licenses a little bit because I think Mark is right. There'd come the time when too many is too many. I mean, but, um, it will call the herd, you know, in a few years because we have a real good police force here, so they are a deterrent, so, um, but, um... How do I say this? Um, we have, we, we did some, we did some things. I should have brought this up in, in, uh, old, old business, but, um, Mr. Hall was a, um, a pretty good person to drive around town and make sure we're doing things right, but, um... We have, we still have that lingering thing of the sidewalks in this town that, um, nothing was done with any of the bad sidewalks again this year. Because a few people, I guess, don't want it to happen. But we did, um, spend quite a bit, quite a bit of grant money to, um, get that program going, um, but yet we never finished it. We never, ever made a policy of how we were going to enforce it and keep it going. And we ought to be ashamed because the sidewalks to get to City Hall from the other side of the town to here, um, there's spots where you have to go out in the street. You couldn't, you couldn't get a wheelchair in it or around it, you couldn't get a, a baby stroller in and around it. And, and I don't understand why we can pick on people for one thing, cutting their trees down, doing other things, but yet every one of us, one of us, not, not every one of us, but most of this board just wants to ignore that we have a, we have a, a rule and we just want to continue to ignore it, just like we did before. Well, we didn't. Our prior council with that, the ordinances that we had, we let it go. We paid for sidewalks, we let it go for twenty years and then we paid for sidewalks again. I was forced to have sidewalks put in my backyard. I didn't have no, you know, I didn't want them. I barely seldom ever see anybody walk down them. My granddaughter does more than anybody else now, which is sort of nice, but, um, I would have much rather seen that money going to fixing the sidewalks that are already there. Around the post office, I think it's terrible as a government building and nobody cares that them sidewalks are bad. I don't know how many times I've said that, but no one cares. You care about, you care, care about penny any stuff, but you don't care about the infrastructure of this town like you should. That the water infiltration, that was one of your big, big things about getting that taken care of. You've been on the council for six years, eight years, whatever. Um, I mean, it might, we might get there, but I still haven't seen a report. We spent a lot of money on that and, uh, I think it's time that it gets done. So, and that's basically my thing today. It is, I just don't understand why we spent all that money and we haven't finalized that just because nobody wants to do it. So, thank you, and that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Ellis.
Yes, I think I need to, to say a couple of things, even though I had planned to. First of all, about the meet the candidates meeting, it was advertised as meet the candidates, so I thought I would go to this meeting. It was advertised in the newsletter as such. I called Senior Neighbors and they said, yes, it's for meet the candidates. So being a candidate, I went. I was met at the door and said, no, this is not for you. This is for only new candidates, although it was not advertised as such that I wouldn't be allowed to speak. So I wasn't crashing anybody's party or trying to, it was advertised to meet the candidate. I thought someone might want to ask me a question and that's why I went. And the group that complains about having open meetings was standing in front of the door telling me I couldn't come in and I couldn't talk. So I think that's the problem. It's not that I was trying to disrupt them, I listened to what they had to say and I was glad to meet them as well. But when it was advertised for everyone to go, I thought everyone should be allowed to go. And I think that the organizations that allowed those meetings were misled as well. I think the people at Schneider Manor didn't realize that it was not going to be for everyone and they were told it was. I think the people at Senior Neighbors, I know, they said it was for everyone because I called. Jim Salzweidel wasn't on the list, but he came and they let him speak, so it's obvious what was going on. But, um, if you're going to advertise something, then you need to be truthful about it. And that's all my, the last comment I'm going to say about it because it's over, you know? I mean, it happened and that's, that's unfortunate, the way it happened. And of course I'm going to speak up if I see something that's not right. Um, as far as the sidewalks, I know we have a process in place. If we're not following it, maybe we need to add that to another workshop and, and keep discussing it. It's like the INI. Yes, it's something I'm interested in, I'm interested in the streets, they're not going to go away in eight years or two years or whatever your term might be. These are big problems that have been around for a long time, they're not going to go away overnight. I can't solve them, I am one vote, I am trying to do my best as all the other council members are. So if we've got a continuing problem, we need to continue to discuss it, approach it from a different, uh, angle, uh, keep working on it. Don't just get mad and say, you're not doing it. We are not doing it, we are the council. We have four votes right now, but we have five people to vote on this council. So if we need to work on something, the council needs to work on something, not me, not anyone else individually. That's not how a government is supposed to work. Um, and then I did have a comment, this is completely off the political, whatever games we're playing. High Street, I had a resident complain about that because of now all the other streets, that's getting a lot of traffic and that little section, um, right off Division, between Division and Jackson is really taking a beating. There's not much pavement left there. I walked past it and there's some pretty deep rats. Could we maybe take a look at that and, um, maybe keep an eye, make sure people are driving the speed limit on it as well as, um, filling in some of those deep holes?
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, if Mr. Hall were here, he would have told you that there was a joint Planning Commission meeting, uh, that was held last Monday night, that, uh, all township, or Jen's Township and the city of Lowell all participated in. I stood in, in his absence and, uh, our city clerk was there also and, uh, as well as one of our planning commissioners, uh, Kelly Carney. And, uh, we had a great exchange with, uh, our friends from the other townships in understanding and learning what they're doing and filling them in, in, in terms of what some of the activities that we're doing in Lowell. It's always good to get together and do that and that's, uh, done usually on an annual basis and, uh, we will be hosting the, uh, meeting next time. Moving on then to the Chamber of Commerce and Light and Power have already met and you, uh, last, uh, month, but have not met this month, so you'll be getting something on that later. However, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that Girls' Night Out is October fifteenth and so come on up, come on up, participate, it's always a great deal of fun, uh, for all the businesses as well as the ladies and, uh, there's lots of activity and it's nice to see the streets whole and busy. I also was able to attend a legislative breakfast last Friday that, uh, pulled in most of the elected officials, uh, senior elected officials, uh, from across the metropolitan area, uh, just to, uh, get together and chit chat and also talk about various activities that, uh, affect all of our communities. And the main topic was community mental health and how that's being affected in all of our various communities. And there was a little history given, uh, back from the old state mental hospital days and, uh, what transpired into, uh, putting a lot of needy people out of the streets. So, uh, that was good and it's always been good to get together with, with other people and now I've had time to do those things. The Look Committee will meet, uh, coming up, uh, grant requests are due October thirtieth, uh, for anyone that would be interested in applying. Uh, those requests are due about four P M. Uh, the board will meet to review those grants on November eleventh at four P M. And then they'll make decisions on November eighteenth at four P M. So a little bit of what's going on there. And I think other than mentioning that Peter Lutzman provided a nice, uh, update for boards, commissions and other chairpeople that, uh, might be, uh, involved in doing community service, uh, that, that was a good session and, uh, thank Mark for pulling all that together. And we learned a few things and, uh, Mark and I are getting together for lunch tomorrow and there'll be a few things we'll talk about, so, uh, anyway. And Peter's always entertaining as well as informative, so, uh, that pretty much wraps up most of the things that I had.
Oh, no. One more thing.
Uh, the, uh, our, our meetings that we did have, uh, at Senior Neighbors as well as at Schneider Manor were quite informative and it was good to get together with, with folks, but, and I won't touch on the political stuff and so forth, I was there because I get to work with a couple of, I had continued for two more years, I get to work with a couple of the new people, I'm sure. And so it was good to meet and hear what they had, had to say. But in that process, I came up that perhaps our coffee with council might transition to one of those locations. And I checked the tape from the last meeting and it will be at the Senior Neighbors Center, not Schneider Manor. And so it will be at the Senior Neighbor Center and, uh, from eight to ten A M. on November seventh. And so I will put that posting in the paper also. I want to make sure that, and I mentioned that, I think we'll have one more meeting, but, uh, yeah. So, come on out, have some coffee, talk with the council members.
Thank you, Mr. Howe, manager's report.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and the council members. Most of the utility work, actually all of the utility work now on Jefferson and Jackson is, uh, completed. Um, we're hoping to see the first course of paving this week, I think they're talking about Thursday, Thursday. Um, the Grove High Streets project that started today, they started pulverizing the asphalt and, and laying that back down, it's a crushing shape, remember, so they'll pulverize the, the asphalt, lay the buildings back down and then they'll asphalt on top of that. Um, the North Washington, uh, project was done today. Um, that's the project from Fremont north to the city limits and since we have machine in town, um, we decided to have them go up there and, um, pulverize the material, lay it back down. They also have the ability to, uh, add a brine mix to it, there's a tank kind of machine, so they were able to add a brine mix to it and, and, uh, other agencies have had some experience and that helped them to hold the material together. So we're going to keep monitoring it and we think it's an improvement on that street, certainly not the end of it, but, uh, certainly an improvement on that very po- 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 section of City Street. Um, the other thing that I'll add is, uh, on, on the utility work, just a special thanks to, uh, Todd Fodos and Jeff Van Siders. I know that, um, we had to do some extra work in terms of the, the testing and, and getting those wire connections, uh, finalized, so, um, those two did quite a bit of extra and I really appreciate their efforts in, in helping to get that utility work done. You, uh, may have noticed that, uh, some of the fire hydrants are going to facelift. Um, I got a comment the other day that somebody said that they wish they were painted a different color. And, uh, I thought, oh boy, here we go with the fire hydrant color discussion, um, but they're red. Uh, um, we have a part-time employee prepping and painting them and, uh, we're trying to get as many done as we can before, um, winter arrives. Uh, the Flabber Connect Group, you recall, they met with you, uh, they met again and they're, they're moving forward with the idea of converting a portion of the old cable building into a business center. You were, called, they attended a council workshop, just to have some discussion with you about, uh, whether or not, um, that would be an effort that would be, be worth undertaking and so they're continuing to move forward. And then if you, uh, have any other topics or any topics that you'd like to cover at your October twenty-sixth workshop, please let me know because we'll start putting the agenda together and preparing for that. That's all I have.
All right. Great. Thank you. Appointments, uh, all of our boards and commissions are full.
Appointments, all of our boards and commissions are full, with the exception of two vacancies that Mr. Hall leaves us with, and that would be the Laura, as well as the planning commission. So I think there he goes until after the election, and proceed after that, I think we'll be okay for the next month. So for that.
And then we adjourn at seven-fifty.
One second.
A second to adjourn, all in favor.
Yes.
Yes.